Good evening. I'm David Assa, the Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Fall River. It's 6:00 PM on Thursday, May 18, 2017. We are meeting at one government center in the committee hearing room. This is a meeting of a local public body and as such is subject to the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, commonly known as the Open Meeting Law. Pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, Subsection F, I hereby notify all persons in attendance that this meeting is being recorded with both video and audio devices. Our recording secretary this evening is Carla Dutra, the lady to my left. She's recording an audio version and Fall River Government TV. Phil Sabatino is recording both the video and audio versions. If anyone desires to make an audio, video, or combination thereof, please notify me now and I shall make a public announcement. Present this evening is William Kenny, Director of Planning for the City of Fall River, the gentleman to my immediate right. Regular members from my left to right are John Frank, Vice Chairman, James Corkins, Carolyn Morissette, Clerk, Gregory Brilliant, and ultimate member, Ed Avila. Carla, have all petitions to be considered been properly advertised and all interested parties notified in accordance with the rules and regulations of the Zoning Board of Appeals of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, is amended?
Yes.
I declare the May 18, 2017 regularly scheduled meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Fall River, open for such business as shall regularly come before it. I remind all persons presenting before the Board, including the petitioners or butters, anyone in support or anyone opposed to the petition, that your presentation should be limited to three minutes. Questions and responses must be directed through the Chairman. The Board's rules and regulations direct the Board to specifically look for information which supports the petitioner's claim. As such, the petitioner should identify and factually support the basis for the petition. I hereby advise the petitioners and all interested persons that this Board is the Zoning Board of Appeals. The Board's authority exists pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, and is limited in scope and deals with the use of land as regulated by Chapter 86 of the ordinances of the City of Fall River. Additional permits, licenses, reviews, and/or approvals may be required for specific development and/or use, which is the subject of the petition before the Zoning Board this evening. The clerks in the building, planning, engineering, and licensing departments are competent in the discharge of their duties as clerks. They are, however, not lawyers and are not competent to give legal advice. The action taken by the Board has a real and lasting effect upon the title to your real estate. I urge all petitioners to seek competent legal counsel before filing your petition and after a decision of the Board has been made. For example, there is a new city ordinance, 2015-11, which is codified in Section 10-1, requiring site plan reviews. The Director of Planning has recommended to the Board that if relief is granted, then the Board should consider, number one, a condition that no building permit shall be issued prior to the approval of the site plan by the Site Plan Review Committee under said Section 10-1. And, number two, a condition that no site preparation work be commenced prior to approval of the site plan by the Site Plan Review Committee. A copy of the ordinance is available at the City Clerk's office or from the Planning Department. I recommend that anyone asking to develop, improve, or use real estate should first ask a building inspector from our Building Department, since they are the zoning enforcement authority. Finally, I disclose that an official copy of the floor of a zoning ordinance is available at the City Clerk's office. One cannot rely on the online zoning ordinance. The Director of Planning is here to serve the Board. He is not a voting member of this Board. His duties include the supervision of all applications, submissions, notices, correspondence, agendas, minutes, records, and decisions related to the Board as required by the Zoning Board of Appeals' Rules and Regulations and as amended by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A. This evening, I shall ask the Director of Planning, after the petitioner's presentation, public comments in support or opposition, and any Board members' inquiry, but before the Board's deliberation, motion, and vote, whether he has any relevant information relating to the specific petition. Agenda item number four and number eight this evening will be taken out of order. I have been advised that the petitioner for Agenda Item Number Four has requested that this matter be tabled to our June regularly meeting, 2017, and Agenda Item Eight is a petition in which I cannot participate. Are there any questions before we start with Agenda Item Number Four? If there are none, we'll start with Agenda... What, somebody's back there? Yes, sir.
You mentioned that Item Number Four is going to be continued till...
No, no. What I said is, I'm taking it out of order. We're going to do that first. Because we received... The Board received communication this afternoon that the request is to table the matter until the June meeting because... And I'll read whatever the correspondence is to the floor. And then the Board... So, if anybody's here for Number Four, it just seemed to... Thinking that there were going to be people in opposition or in favor of it, and they looking to continue it or table it to the next meeting rather than have you wait till we go through four items before we get there.
Okay. So that next meeting will be June 18?
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth?
June 15.
Which is also a Thursday?
Correct. We usually meet on a Thursday, sir. Number one, right on top.
Four.
Four. No, no, number four, I got it. So, Baghdad Oral Offices, dated May 18, 2017. Please be advised that I am the attorney for the Salvation Army. The Salvation Army hereby requests that tonight's public hearing on its application for a special permit be continued until the next meeting of the Zoning Board on Thursday, June... Is it June 15?
Yes.
June 15, 2017. The purpose of this request is to allow the Salvation Army to better educate neighbors about its proposed use of the property. Thank you very truly, yours, Sandy S. Baghdad. So that letter has been received by the Board. I know people is already in favor that came in favor of the petition or opposed to the petition. I won't take any evidence, but if there's any comments you'd like to make, but that's the petition. That's the request from the petitioner.
I'm going to make a motion to table.
Okay. But what... There's nobody saying anything. So Greg, you got a motion? Yes, sir.
Well, there'd be... So you're accepting comments now for opposition?
No. No, taking no evidence.
Okay. Thank you.
So, is there anyone else that has a question about tabling it to the next meeting? All right. So Greg Brilliant made the motion to table it to the next meeting.
Second.
Second by Jim Corkins. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Opposed, none. So Number Four will be continued until the June 15, 2017 meeting. We'll start... And I guess the next Agenda Item Eight, which I can't listen to, so John Frank will share that. Or should we take it out of the file?
Agenda Item Eight, Gabby Rom.
Rami.
Rami. 121 Garfield Street, Lot E345, variance request to demolish the existing single-family dwelling and construct a new single-family dwelling, waiving use of dimensional requirements in apartment district 32, lot size 8009 square feet.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Dan Agia.
Mr. Agia, could I just hang up the phone for a second? Mr. Kenny, was... What's on our agenda? Was that law was advertised? No, it's not correct. No disrespect. It said just use requirements. That's what I was going to ask. So was it...
What did you say?
Says only waiving use requirements. The Chairman didn't just say use and dimensional requirements.
Correct.
So was advertised correctly?
Use requirements.
Does that mean...
No. The petition reads, "The applicant requests a variance from the City of Fall River zoning bylaw, waiving their requirements in an A2 district. The applicant proposes to demolish an existing single-family dwelling and to construct a new single-family dwelling."
Do you feel as though, but it was only advertised as waiving use?
That's correct.
I just read it, Dan, and I knew that had to be dimensional. I just...
Yeah.
In fact, the use requirement, probably it's a liable use, right?
The denial just asked for demolish existing structure and construct a new single-family home.
Because the use is allowed.
The use is allowed. Correct. Single-family use is allowed.
That's why I thought this wasn't correct. That's why I'm just asking.
I don't know why the ad reads that way. Because it doesn't show up on anything else.
It's not... It's not...
We'll let it go.
Let it go?
Yeah.
Okay. Just wanted to bring to your attention to make sure that...
As long as it doesn't get appealed, we'll be... We could always ref... We would have to refile, but just to get ahead with it. So the applicant owns the existing single-family dwelling located at 121 Garfield Street. You can pass this down. This is just a little portion of the GIS website card that shows the location of the existing structure. And if you look on the plan, I have shown where that dwelling is shown in the northeasterly corner of the property. This is an A2 district that has required setbacks of 30 foot in the front yard, 20 side, and 30 in the rear. The existing structure now is probably 10 feet to the side property line and about 5 feet to the street line of Garfield. He is proposing to build a new dwelling, 50 by 30, which would pull us away from the northerly boundary and would have a side yard setback of 14 feet to the southerly boundary. So as far as use goes, we're demolishing one home and building a new one rather than being tucked off to one side of the property. It's a regular rectangular shaped house sitting in the middle of the lot with a 20-foot front yard that will allow us to, you know, have off-street parking and 14-foot side yards. And of course, we would exceed the minimum requirement of 30 feet in the rear.
Is it a garage?
It's going to be a raised ranch, so yeah, that'll have a garage.
Besides the two boxes.
Correct. Yeah.
Good.
So that's all. We have this pre-existing non-conforming structure, parcel and structure, and adding on to this existing structure doesn't get the applicant what he really needs or wants for a home. So he's willing to demolish that home and construct a brand-new one. That's all.
Also, the second... Second dwelling?
It's a garage in the back right hand corner.
That's going to...
That's going to stay.
That's going to stay.
Yeah. It's just a shed.
Are there any other questions? Any members of the... In opposed?
I make a motion that we grant the petition... Oh. Oh, you said opposed, right? So I thought it was going to... I apologize. I thought I'd already said fair. I apologize, John.
Do we have a motion?
Do we have the usual site plan conditions added or not?
I make...
Standard two conditions of site plan view.
CMP makes it.
I make a motion to grant the petition specifically waiving the use and dimension... I don't think use has to be... Use and dimension requirements in an apartment district and the standard two conditions that usually do a site plan and...
No site... Right, the issue is...
That's my motion.
And as part of it, the existing structure will be demolished?
Yes.
All those are paid?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll start with Agenda Item Number One. Hutchins Holdings II LLC, 421 Current Road, Lot C352. Variance request to use 4,850 square feet of the existing building as a childcare facility and 650 square feet of the existing building as a yoga studio, waiving use in industrial park IP district. And it's a variance request.
Good evening. Rich Ritchie out from Field Engineering. I'm also here with Scott Hutchins from Hutchins Holdings. We're here before you for a use variance for two uses that are currently not allowed in the industrial zoning district in an existing building located at 421 Current Road. As the petition states, they're looking at approximately 4,850 square feet in this portion of the building for a proposed daycare center and another 650 square feet for proposed yoga slash wellness studio. The use in this building, we feel, first of all, wouldn't be detrimental to the overall industrial park. Actually, it would be a benefit to the industrial park, the employees, and the patrons of the park. Currently, these services aren't available in the direct, immediate vicinity of this location. Also, don't feel that it derogates from the intent of the bylaw by providing these support services to the businesses in the park. Just so... We were here before. You've got... You guys for setback variance for this portion of the building. This is around Rossy Foods Facility here. They had purchased this building. This building is under construction now. They're also working on the fit out of other portions of this building for their operations. More than adequate parking exists on-site to support the, both the existing and proposed uses of the facility with no additional paved areas or parking areas required for this petition other than what's been previously approved.
Can I ask you why you brought in as a variance versus a special permit? Because under the ordinance, we... I think the childcare facility under 48, Section 3, probably would have allowed it. And the other part of our ordinance had to do with the recreational facility in the industrial park district. I just... Is that what the building inspector told you to do as a variance?
Yeah. The question... We have the table, your table, the table of uses, which does say that this is allowed and the educational use is allowed, but they also have this catch-all at the top of the table and the invented discrepancies between...
Yeah, the written is...
Yeah. And they don't specifically refer to these types of support services in the written description of the IP zoning district.
Indeed. So that's why you...
Yes.
You have the ample parking for the employees, one for the shifts.
Exactly. Yes.
Because I saw something designated in a... I think it was a note. Yoga studio use... Space is required, one space per each employee per shift, and you have 10 spaces.
Correct.
That's what you have designated for...
Yeah. Within that front parking area. Correct.
Okay. That's all I have. Any members of the Board have questions?
How is this going to be open to who? The childcare center and the...
Scott can...
Good question, sir. They're both going to be open to the public. So, yes. We've already spoken to people within the Industrial Park Association. They actually have a letter of endorsement from the President of the Pripa, as well as Fall River Economic Development. So it seems to be something that, you know, people within the park see a need for, and that's the intention.
Hours of operation?
Still to be determined, but probably seven to five, somewhere in that range.
How many days a week?
It'll be Monday through Friday.
Is that encompassing the yoga studio or just the childcare?
That's what we're still trying to work out. Again, that's going to be sort of demand-driven. People are going to work early and they want to have a 6:00 AM class. We might have a 6:00 AM class. And then same thing in after-work, probably 5 o'clock class. So that might be a six to six scenario within the yoga studio.
What's the latest that'll stay open?
I would say 7:00. You know, would be a stretch on that. The primary focus of the yoga business is going to be more of a business-to-business type of application.
I'm just only asking because if a motion is made, you don't want to... If you say a specific time, that's the times you get if it's put in the form of a motion.
Right.
So if it's not to exceed a certain timeframe, then you'll be protected.
Okay. All right. So I'm better off saying 8:00, just in case they decide to do a 7:00 class?
You were explaining before, Greg had a question for you. What did you say is more of a business...
A lot of business-to-business focus where other companies within the park would be able to use the studio during the day if they want to have three days a week to, you know, have their employees come over, in addition to the yoga instructors going to businesses to have space to adequate for them, so...
Any other questions? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? I did receive a letter in favor of this petition from the Fall River Office of Economic Development. It's dated May 17. It was received by the Zoning Board or the Planning Board today, May 18. Dear Zoning Board Members, I am writing to express my support for the petition submitted by Hutchins Holdings II LLC regarding 421 Current Road, Lot Z352. The petitioner is seeking a variance to use 4,850 square feet of their existing building as a childcare facility and 650 square feet of their existing building as a yoga studio, waiving use in an industrial park. So, signed by Kenneth Fiola Jr., Esquida Executive Vice President. So he supports this use. And I think there's nothing else. Is there anything else that...
So here's another letter. I'm sorry, I didn't... From the Industrial Park Association.
He made... He referenced it. We did not have it.
That was emailed to the Board.
So we're going to make it. It was emailed to the Board. So we received it right now. It's a letter dated May 16, 2017, signed by Carl Hetzler, President of the FRIPA. I'm writing on behalf of the companies that comprise the membership of the Board of Industrial Park Association. Regarding Hutchins Holdings II Property at 421 Current Road, we are very excited about the plans to leave space within the building that will hold both a daycare facility and yoga wellness center. We feel both of these businesses will have a positive impact and provide benefit to the company's employees and neighbors. We are very excited to have them open and support their application for a variance within the park to allow these activities. Signed, Carl Hetzler, President. Mr. Hutchins, I have one question. Do you live over there? You probably spent lots of time...
We spent a lot of time there. Sometimes it feels like we do.
The only reason why I ask you when I was looking at your filings with the Secretary of State's office, you used that address as your residence. And I said, I just want to ask the question.
Really?
You're also living at the facility.
No.
No? Okay. So if there's no opposition, no in favor?
Motion be granted with a standard two...
They would not apply. Oh, I'm still... I cut you out of the loop. But that's okay.
It's already built, right?
He's already...
And then the only other thing is...
The hours of operation?
Not to exceed 8:00 PM.
I'm going to ask one question. Anything about signage do we need to worry about or any signage will be in conformity with the law?
Yeah. The signs will be in conformance with the ordinance. I reviewed that today.
So I have Greg's motion to grant with those conditions. We have a second from Jim Corkins. Any discussion on the...
What was... We only had a closing time of 8:00 PM. Start time's 7:00 AM.
Yeah. If we want to make it 6:00 AM, just in case they do that morning class.
Six to eight.
Is that for both functions, childcare and yoga, same hours?
I don't think the childcare will be that early. I would think 6:30, 7:00 o'clock.
Wait, wait. So Greg, do you want to amend your motion and make it from...
Six AM to...
Six AM to 8:00 PM, Monday through Friday?
Monday through Friday. Nothing's going to open on Saturday? The yoga?
Don't anticipate it. No.
Okay. If they need to change it, they'll come back before the Board. So your motion is amended now, Greg?
Right. And I'm sorry, sir. I mean, should we just, just in case, have weekend operations? I don't want to make this too long.
I don't want you to have to keep coming back.
My wife runs a yoga studio and I really don't want her working on the weekends, so we should just leave it Monday through Friday.
So that's real easy. Monday through Friday. Six to eight.
Six to eight.
There you go.
Wife staying home.
So Greg, that's your amended motion.
That's my amended motion.
Jim, your... Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor? Two, three, four. Okay. So that is granted. Five votes in favor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Agenda Item Number... Is that mine or yours? This is yours. This is going to be part of the record. This is this... I've got a hand on myself. Agenda Item Number Two. Steve Mello, 645 Brayton Avenue, Lot F74. It's a special permit request to construct a new business sign and a new front building facade, waiving use of dimensional requirements in a two-family district R4, lot size 6,063 plus or minus square feet. Good evening, sir. Would you identify yourself for the record, please?
My name is Steve Mello.
Tell us what you'd like to do.
And I would like to upgrade the existing sign that is there and construct a new sign on the building, attached to the building.
What type of sign?
The front sign on the street would be a 14 feet 9 inch by 59 inch wide, 24 inch deep, double-faced aluminum monolithic pylon sign.
So it is illuminated?
It is internally illuminated, illuminated.
Internal illumination.
And the sign attached to the building would have 20... Will have one 24-inch, 5-inch-deep channel letter, also internally illuminated, and 22 20-inch by 5-inch-deep illuminated channel letters attached to the building.
It's your own business, right? You guys are on the street for a period of time?
That was my father.
I should be there.
Yeah.
Didn't we grant you a variance once before?
Yes. In 2014, I was granted this exact variance, but it was only good for a year. I have another location in Warren, Rhode Island, and we just got too busy, so we just put the project on hold. But no...
Maybe I've been sitting here too long, but I can remember that. And what about the facade change? It's just the signage? Is that the only thing that you're...
The facade, yes. The facade would also... The facade is what the sign would be attached to.
Yes.
So the facade would take up the width of the building. It's 42 feet wide.
But you're not expanding the building itself?
No.
It's just the facade?
Correct. Yes.
Can you tell us a little bit about the neighborhood? Because electronic signs are not allowed in the R4 district. What are the buildings that are near it?
There is the Serta Bus Station is two buildings over. There is several used car lots, automotive businesses.
Any residences?
There is a residence immediately to my side, a couple across the street. There is an attorney's office, I believe, across the street, and a studio. Dunkin' Donuts is up the street. Donald's to the right. Gas stations. So I think it's pretty consistent with the street.
What are your hours of operation? How... Hours of operation and how long will the signs be illuminated for?
The hours of operation would be 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday. 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM on Saturdays, closed on Sunday. And we had... What was granted last time was to have the sites illuminated from 4:00 PM to 11:00 PM, seven days a week.
And they're internally illuminated, but they're not message board signs?
Correct.
They're not video signs?
No.
All right. That's the difference.
So your thought is to have them illuminated 4:00 PM to 11:00 PM?
Yes.
Seven days a week?
Yes, in the summer it would be, of course, daylight, yeah.
You know the concern of the illuminated signs with the residences, I just want to make sure when they're going to be illuminated.
How would the sign affect the house that is adjacent to you? Would it be illuminating into that house or is that a solid law?
It would be facing, well, the sign would be in front of their house. Not exactly sure where their...
Is it facing north, south, or east-west? So, the reason why I'm familiar with the house, it is an extension, an addition, that was a bedroom, the windows kind of high, there's an Apollo in the front of it. And I just ask if it's facing the other, if it's facing north, then there shouldn't be any light infiltration because it's not facing, and if it's facing them as you're coming down Brayton Avenue, then maybe that would be an issue. Maybe they're here, I don't know what the others are here.
Yeah, I mean, if, I've been there during the day and I believe it is facing north, I'm terrible with compasses.
So is it facing across the screen or is it facing towards the old Sam's Club?
It's facing north, I believe.
Facing north.
Facing north.
And it's one-sided?
Two-sided.
No, two-sided.
Two-sided?
Yes.
So that leads me to believe it's facing east and west. So when you're driving east or west on Brayton Avenue, you're seeing it, not just, you get the front, when you see the facade, you see that, but the other one, that's right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
You said this was already granted? Or is it different?
No, I think that the amount, this signs are bigger than what we granted before.
The, the sign is actually smaller, that goes on the street.
Yes.
The channel letters are bigger.
But though, that's affixed to, that's flat against the building.
Correct.
But yeah, we did grant, I think, he said 2005, I don't remember.
2014.
But I remember that when they bought it, we had granted that variance before.
And was illuminated all?
Yes.
I have the decision right here, if you want to see it.
Is anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? No?
Overproofable based on... Oh, Kenny, did you have any?
Oh, good. What's your title? You're the vice chairman?
No, no, it just keeps me honest, go ahead.
I just wanted to thank him for admiring the chair of the procedure. My only thought was...
And I created the procedure.
I know. The gentleman presented some very detailed photos or plans.
They're not a part of it yet.
I thought that was very helpful and perhaps in writing the decision, we could refer to, you know, the approval is specifically based on this design, these plans, tie it to that.
So I get, Jim, if you're thinking of making the motion, then maybe we should make it incorporate what was presented as being the specifics of the condition that appeared in the petition itself. That way there'd be no question about the size and, and then if you wanted to, do you agree with that?
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
And along the hours of operation? And I think that may, that may work if it satisfies, because it doesn't have to go to site plan review.
Correct, it doesn't.
So I move approval based upon the conditions submitted in the application with the hours of operation to be, or hours of illumination to be 4 to 11?
4 p.m. to 11, clear. Hours of operation, do we care about that or does the illumination?
I don't think we're changing those hours.
4 p.m. to 11 p.m., seven days a week.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Greg. Brilliant, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five. That petition's granted with those conditions. Thank you, good luck, you, sir.
So how do you get...
A few times.
Agenda item number three. Kimberly Ruah, 581 Ray Street, R1351. Variance request to construct in addition to the existing single-family dwelling waiving applicable requirements in a single-family residence district S, lot size 11,386 plus or minus square feet.
Good evening, for the record, Dan Aguiar of Site Tech Engineering. Here this evening on behalf of Kimberly Ruah, who is the property owner of the existing single-family dwelling at 581 Ray Street. You'll see on the submitted plan that we have an 11,386-square-foot parcel, just shy of the 12,000-square-feet required in the district. And with 99 feet of frontage on Ray Street, that is short by one foot the required frontage, but we do exceed the frontage dimension along Hemlock. But since the door, front door is facing Ray, we view Ray Street as being the frontage. So we have a pre-existing non-conforming parcel of land, and you see the existing structure is located seven feet off of Hemlock Street. The proposal is to construct in addition to the westly side of the existing dwelling that you see shaded on the plan that you have. The reason we're here as a variance, not as a special permit, is because of the little bit of an angle in this house, the very far corner of the addition will actually be closer to Ray Street than the existing structure. If we were just projecting that line of the front line of the structure and it was getting no closer to Ray Street, then it could be filed as a special permit. But technically, we will be 23 feet off of Ray Street, where the opposite corner would be 25 feet off of Ray. So the relief that we're basically seeking is a front yard setback waiver of two feet from 25 to 23. We would exceed the side yard setback of 15 feet, where we have a proposed 29 feet to the westly property line. So that's all, we have an existing, pre-existing non-conforming structure, pre-existing non-conforming lot. This location for the addition would be the least, would create the least amount of impact to the neighborhood and the least amount of relief being requested.
What's, what is the addition, bedroom, cup?
I believe it's going to be additional living space. It's a very small house.
Oh, we have soft-street parking?
Yes, yeah, coming off of Hemlock Street, there, I believe there's a driveway.
Is it going to be one or two stories, the addition?
I believe it's going to match the existing... Well, maybe she can answer. Come on down.
My name's Mike Ruah, I'm actually the father of Kimberly. The, what it is, it's, it's going to match the existing house, it's actually going to mirror the left side. So it's going to be a 16, it's going to be a bedroom and bathroom. It's going to be no higher because the roof lines, everything, we want to make it look like a U-shaped and like between the two, there's a bump out of eight feet in the front on the, on the north side of the house, so on the south side we want to make it match. So there's, there'll be like an open porch in front. It's actually going to beautify the, the house and the neighborhood, so it's all to make it look better. And no, no heights, no nothing, just a bedroom and bathroom.
So it's going to be, who asked the question? I think it's going to be a single, one-story?
One-story, yes.
One-story. Same, same roof line, same everything that's existed. Bedroom and bathroom.
Bedroom, bathroom, that's it.
Is there anyone here in favor of this? Any, any other questions in the board? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Mr. Kenny, do you have any comments?
I don't have any comments, it's a great meeting you're running, I would suggest if this is allowed, that the usual site plan...
So for this one, so for this particular, if this is granted, then the two conditions that the planning board or director of planning recommends should probably be considered as part of the motion.
Took the words out of my mouth.
Thank you.
I'll make that motion with the two conditions.
John Frank makes the motion to grant with those conditions, site plan review and no work done before the site plan is seconded. Second by Greg, brilliant. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, none? Okay, that's granted. Thank you.
Certainly in touch.
Yep.
Agenda item number five. DCH Realty Trust Weaver Street, T318. Special permit to construct two 36-unit, three-story apartment buildings with associated parking and utilities, lot size 3.90 plus or minus acres.
Yes, question?
Yes.
I apologize if not everyone can see that. Well, anybody in the audience, I mean. Good evening, again for the record, Dan Aguiar of Site Tech Engineering. Here this evening on behalf of DCH Realty Trust. They are the applicant for this requested special permit regarding these two apartment buildings. The existing property is owned by Magellan's cousin LLC, Domingos Maderas, being the president of the LLC, who has also signed the application as owner. We have an existing property, as the chairman stated, three-plus-acre parcel of land with over 100 feet of frontage along Weaver Street, that is located in a commercial mill district. In a commercial mill district, the minimum frontage required is 100 feet and a minimum area of 10,000 square feet. So this lot far exceeds the area of frontage requirements for a commercial mill district. If you look under the table of allowed uses in a commercial mill district, you will see that multifamily dwellings in excess of 20 units is allowed by special permit, and that's what brings us before you today. If you read through the rest of the zoning bylaw, excuse me, you'll find that in the commercial mill district, there are a number of types of development that are allowed by right, whether they're hotels, restaurants, bars, you name it. I mean, it allows a great amount of development with, with large-scale structures. For orientation purposes, for you that don't know exactly where this is, as we are heading north on North Main Street, you take a left onto Weaver Street, and you would have the Weaver Street apartments that are up on that right-hand side, the old mill building that they...
Bored City Mill.
That they redone, Bored City Mill. Directly to our north, it's where the city electric occupies the majority of these two industrial buildings. As we continue down Weaver Street, you'll see a trust company over to the right, Kidney Center just after that. This is the location of where the mill building had recently burned down, just past our site. We are boarded to the south by a railroad spur and also to the west by another very large mill building. So our proposal is to construct these two 36-unit, three-story apartment buildings with associated parking. Each building would have 72 parking spaces, meeting the requirements of two spaces per unit that's required by the zoning bylaw. In addition to the construction of those two buildings, we have also proposed the construction of an office slash community center with 14 additional parking spaces in association with that building. Although not enumerated in the zoning bylaw, this is an amenity that we normally would have on a development like this, especially where these are to be all rental units, to have an onsite rental office is very, very important in an area for mail to be delivered, small community area for any type of gathering. We've also proposed a recreational area to the rear of that parking lot, and also you see shown on this plan in this area that we have designated for stormwater management. It's clear, as you read through the zoning bylaw, and although this isn't the type of special permit where we, where we need to discuss, is it more or less detrimental than the existing non-uses or anything to that extent? But it's clear that the allowed uses in this district allow for a much greater intensity with regards to traffic, pedestrian access, parking spaces than the proposed activity. We've clearly demonstrated the ability to construct these two buildings, meeting the building setbacks that are required in the district, which are only 10 feet, believe it or not, for front, rear, and sides. We've exceeded all those, and the ability to create the parking allows us to conform. So just the specific use of an apartment building in this commercial mill district is what brings us before you as a special permit.
Are these going to be one, two, or three-bedroom apartments?
It would be a mix. What ends up happening is, in buildings that we've done like this, there will be a mix of ones, twos, and threes. There are very few threes that get put in here, but in order to attract a wide variety of tenants, we do construct some threes as well, but the majority of them will be ones and twos. And what ends up happening with that is we end up finding that we have much more parking than, than what we need. When we have ones and we have two spaces afforded to that one space, you know, but the zoning requirement does require two spaces per, and that's why we've stuck to that. So no zoning relief with regards to variances are being requested. This is strictly special permit for the use of an apartment building, and a special permit is allowed in the district for anything from a two-family to, to umpteen units, whatever could fit on the site. This is also very important to note that we are in a zoning district that does not have a maximum lot coverage requirement, so we don't have that to contend with either. So we've complied with, with everything that the zoning bylaw sets forth, except for the need of the special permit coming before the board. And even for the height of the building, I believe we're allowed a six-story or an 80-foot building, which we're nowhere near that, or a three-story building, probably 45 feet in height.
Is that, yeah?
Yes.
THC Realty Trust, do they have a track record in building anything of distinction?
That I don't know. I had been working with the owner of the property. My guess is they probably, I'm guessing this is, it's probably just an entity for permitting, so that the actual builder, his name's not out there right now, so I'm assuming that's what happened.
I just wondered, because my own, because I know it has nothing to do with that.
I, I don't know. I haven't done work with them in the past.
But that's, that's it, it's just a special permit.
That's it, just a special permit because of apartments. Yeah. I mean, this would receive, and as, as Mr. Kenny will explain, this will receive, you know, great scrutiny through the site plan review process. It's probably actually one of the, the only real major site plan review projects that you guys have had to review yet. Not being a minor, but there aren't many, you know, that are this, that are this intense. So everything regarding lighting and landscaping, drainage, that will all get reviewed through the planning board.
The site plan review on this one, the, the planning board will work.
Correct.
Getting it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Greg.
That was just going to be my, you just said landscaping, just that the stuff is in here, that will be all handled, that's not...
Unless, unless, unless there's something that you specifically want.
No, I mean, it can't just be devoid of any greenery at that point, they will deal with that?
Yes. Site plan review will deal with that.
And, and in the zoning ordinance, there, there is now parking requirements, and in that parking requirements, there are landscaping requirements, you know, as minimum as they are, but on a parking lot larger than five spaces, 8% of the interior space needs to be preserved for green space, so all that, all those numbers, the drainage...
See, they're not asking for any waivers of that, so they have to do it in compliance with the...
If I wanted to pave the entire lot and do no landscaping, I would be, I would have to ask you as, as a variance, and that's not the case. And it's also very important to understand that this area, and just in 2013, just recently, the city in their rezoning efforts, rezone this area, Commercial Mill District, that specifically now incorporated these types of uses by special permit in this specific area. So this wasn't just a willy-nilly, oh, just slap up a, a zoning district. I mean, it was viewed as an area that could be afforded the ability to construct apartments, hotels, restaurants, bars, theaters, banks, I mean, there's, there's a number of allowed uses in this, in this zoning district.
Okay. Anyone else members of the board? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Okay. Counsel, hold on. You can come down, you can stay, stay there if you want, I'll give you the last word, but tell us, tell us what you want, tell us your opposition, please.
I come here in support of the letter that you received from the Redevelopment Authority, signed by Ken Fiola, and I'm not going to...
I have it, I have it, I'll read it in.
You read it in at the end, so I'm not going to repeat that, in support of all of his pieces that he speaks of.
Well, now that you, now that you say that, let me...
Can we get your name first, Danny?
Oh, Stephen Wong.
Stephen Wong, City Council.
Yes, because I've now gagged, I've now gagged the chairman of the Fall River Redevelopment Authority, because he abrogated his authority by having Ken Fiola sign as the agent. So we've received a letter today from the Fall River Redevelopment Authority, addressed to the Zoning Board of Appeals, dear Zoning Board members, in speaking with the chairman of the Fall River Redevelopment Authority, it happens to be Mr. Kenny, I am writing to express our concern to the petition submitted by DCH Realty Trust regarding Weaver Street Lot T318. The petitioner is seeking a special permit to construct two 36, three-story apartment buildings with associated parking and utilities. As you are aware, the Fall River Redevelopment Authority is in the process of preparing a waterfront urban renewal plan, a URP area, and includes the proposed Weaver Street location. Until the URP is completed, I recommend that this petition be tabled. Until such time, the public, elected officials, and the state can review and approve a development plan for the area and the entire waterfront area from Weaver's Cove to Kennedy Park, based upon sound urban renewal planning methodology. Fall River's waterfront will be undergoing significant redevelopment over the coming years as a result of the RT Route 79 north improvements and the URP. As such, the proposed use may or may not hinder the Weaver area, Weaver Street area, from reaching its development potential. However, without any description as to whether the proposed development would be constructed as market rate units, subsidized units, or a combination of both, it would seem to me that the city would be best served if the project was tabled at this point until the waterfront URP is completed. Clearly, the close proximity and impact of a proposed methadone clinic and impatient treatment facility could impact the marketability of the residential facility for market rate units. Lastly, with the re-establishment of commuter rail, the proposed location of the residential units is close to the tracks and could be problematic in terms of noise from freight and passenger train traffic. Inevitably, the developer and/or residents of could be negatively impacted by the re-establishment of proposed commuter rail and oppose the project during its permitted construction and operational phase. It is for these reasons noted above that I would like to reiterate my opposition to the petition submitted by DCH Realty Trust regarding Weaver Street Lot T318. If you have any questions or would like to discuss the matter further, please do not hesitate to contact me. Best, Kenneth Fiola Jr., Agent, Fall River Redevelopment Authority. With those statements, I full-heartedly support that letter of opposition. Also, I was a member of...
Also, I was a member of the Housing Policy Working Group, it was a comprehensive plan that was finished in November 2016. It was a comprehensive housing study done in the city of Fall River, and I don't believe, I was kind of a little bit dismayed when I looked at the application with the lack of information that was provided, in that what type of housing was going to be there, what they were planning on, it was very devoid of any real solid information. But besides those, those comments that were made from the Redevelopment Authority, the environmental impact on our schools, we're talking about seventy-two new units in this area, where right now we are seeing some impact within the school districts in that area, I think that's very, very important to look at. And, you know, as a, not only as a city council, but as a homeowner in a resident city of Fall River, not that I want to say that I'm against this plan at this point, I just think it's a little early in this to say yes or no to this type of development in that area. And I know there's a lot of things going on, but I think the city of Fall River has to come first, and we need to have our vision put in place, and then decide how that is going to be done. And we're in the middle of that right now, and I think we're jumping the gun a little bit with all these plans for people to go in and start to take over these properties and start developing. So with that, I would say I am requesting that this be tabled, and wholeheartedly support the RDA letter, and I think it would be behoove the board to take that recommendation and table this matter till we can get a better handle on what's going on up there. I thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Long. Obviously, you did a good job, there's nobody else is putting their hand up.
All I'm saying is, I put my hands up, but I wholeheartedly support the letter from Mr. Fiola.
Can we identify yourself, please?
My name is Dawn Saret, I'm a resident here in the city.
Could we have an address for you, please, ma'am?
Nineteen eighty-four...
Okay, thank you.
I came down to propose that and to table it until there's further information coming forth, especially with Star in the proximity, I'm very fearful that a parking house will become rooming for Star.
Okay. Now, yes, sir.
I was questioning...
Good, can I have your name, please?
Brad Wheeler. I'm asking if there's any impact statement on the utilities that are required for the city to provide to these types of facilities. So I'm asking that there be some kind of environmental impact statement that states what's required for the city to provide utility services to these areas?
You're sitting next to one of the gentlemen that could probably modify the ordinance so to include that, but the ordinance as it exists right now, this particular project is on track for a special permit, much lower standard than a variance. In fact, the special permit theory is, it's a permitted use as it exists if the board finds that it won't be detrimental in this particular area. So if it was a variance, I, so the ordinance, the ordinance does not allow for what you're asking for, but the ordinance can in fact be changed, and Mr. Long has the capability of starting that process going. But I, so the request, no, no, the request that you're making, there are five independent minds here, I'm listening to you, but as you're proposing this, I just need to tell you that the ordinance doesn't provide for that. The track that this is on is a very low review in terms of what the board has to consider. And I, but I'll let Mr. Agia...
Is that everyone?
I don't know, I just want to make sure, is there anyone else opposed to this petition?
All right. In response, I'll work a little bit backwards, just so the most recent question will... Anything regarding the availability of existing utilities to service a property like this would all get reviewed through the site plan review process. So monies aren't spent on full engineering design and architecture and all those things until we get past this point and apply for a site plan review. And at that opportunity, the building inspector, Department of Infrastructure, Sewer, Water, Electric, they all have the ability to review the application and make comment. And at that point in time, someone may say, we don't have the ability to give you the utilities that you need, but we're not at that point yet in the process. Getting to some of Mr. Long's comments that reiterate the Fall River Redevelopment Authority's letter regarding this urban renewal plan that they're stating from Weaver, the Weaver area, all the, all the South Park, Kennedy Park, so that's a pretty broad area along our waterfront. I've done probably a dozen large-scale developments within that area over the last ten years, and no one once has asked or made a comment, does this meet what may be our urban renewal program or design? No one questioned Commonwealth Landing's ability to put apartments in their building, or the marketability, or how that would affect a proposed urban renewal plan along that waterfront area. This is a vacant piece of land that is owned by a private entity that has the right to develop this property for many uses that are in the zoning bylaws. It's very important to understand that it is sat vacant, we have a developer that's willing to come in here, this is probably a $10 million project, all said and done. So the fact that the city would turn a blind's eye to that type of development doesn't, doesn't really seem correct. Although I appreciate Mr. Fiola's concern regarding the marketability of our units, if a methadone clinic does get constructed on Weaver Street, which I believe would need a variance in a commercial mill district for any type of medical clinic or anything like that, and I don't believe that petition's even been filed. So I appreciate his concern for our marketability of our units if a methadone clinic or pet project were to happen in this location, but at the current time, I don't believe there is any formal application. The applicants and the owner are aware of the potential for that, and have decided to go further with, with their proceedings. The fact that you grant a special permit doesn't mean that this gets built. There's no guarantees that that happens. There are many other hurdles to cross and get beyond than just the special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals. So we're at that point. With regards to a potential impact either on the apartments by rail or on the rail by the apartments, if you go through many, many municipalities, some of the largest in, in the Commonwealth, and the most densely populated, trains run through apartment complexes and people's backyards every day. It's not a deterrent for apartment-style housing, it's not a deterrent for this type of development or marketability, it happens every day. It may not have happened yet in this city, but there is all kinds of development along Duval Street that this same rail system runs behind. No one had a concern about the rail system or the impact on permitting it, with all these other projects and everything we're going through. So, I mean, it's clear to me, I mean, the letter from Fall River Redevelopment Authority asking you to table a petition before you based on conjecture and what could be's, is to me a bit of a stretch. I mean, you have a petition before you that we're going to ask that you act upon, we're not going to ask that you table this. There are a lot of ifs in this letter, and until those ifs are resolved, I can't give you an answer or a clear response to any of them. This has happened for a while, so is this property to sit dormant for ten years maybe, until this plan is completed? I, to me, that would almost constitute a taking of the person's land, not allowing them to develop land that's legal in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the city of Fall River. And again, getting this letter at four-thirty this afternoon, after the petition's been in for a month, is also a bit disheartening. But it, I can, I thank God that it had nothing of substance that I think would allow the board to vote any other way than to grant the special permit. If you have any specific questions regarding those things, I'd be more than glad to answer them.
The, your, my recollection was, your presentation said that you would, one, two, and three-bedroom market rent units.
That's correct.
That's what your proposal is.
That's correct. And as a stipulation of the, of the special permit, market rate, if that's what the special permit condition is, the applicant can...
That could certainly be a condition if the board grants, but I mean, just in terms of what's, what the ordinance provides for, for the review...
And that's why it wasn't put in the initial application, because it really has no bearing.
You can say market rate?
You can, you can put any condition you want.
Put some conditions on it if we want, but...
I'm just looking at some monitors, what they're charging for rent.
You can tell me it has to be blue, under a special permit, you can put any condition at all.
And what's, so who's going to determine market rate? Who's going to go out there and say, what's a market rate, what isn't?
It would have to be through, for instance, the, you wouldn't, you would not be able to take a Section Eight voucher, for instance. I mean, the paperwork and the rental community...
Can't do that, can't build it, discrimination. You could never do that.
Greg, we're not saying that it's going to be enforceable, we're just saying that you can put it under...
All right, no, I'm saying, I...
But I, my recommendation would be not to go down that road.
I wouldn't either, that's what I'm saying, I wouldn't.
But the presentation, but the presentation, what we're hearing as part of the development is, it's not...
I, I was involved in the Weaver Street, we represented them way back when, and they put a lot, a lot of money into that property, and they made it what it is. I think it's a, it's a pretty decent project, and it's been around here a lot longer than most, and it's been, I don't, I don't know if there's any neighbors here, but I don't know if there's any problems over there.
Well, no, Mr. Long was the only, he spoke for pretty much everyone except for the young lady.
I mean, we really don't have, and again, everyone that spoke, I'm not sure if their butters, director butters, or how close they are to the, to the location. But what's great about this location is that, again, we're abutted by the railroad on one side, on the opposite side of the railroad, there are some, some, a three-family dwelling, a five-family dwelling, and a six-family dwelling, so more apartment-style buildings. And then all commercial users or apartments to our north as well. So we're not putting this in an area comprised of single or family, it's not even bordering an area of single or two-family structures.
I'm of the mindset, if somebody's coming in to spend $10 million in the state of the city, especially down in that area...
And when, and when you look at the uses, what, what could be allowed in that area, I think what ends up happening is some of the existing uses that you have will prohibit a lot of those other uses from happening. So even though they're there, I mean, where we have a limited amount of frontage along Weaver Street, and the bulk of our area is to the rear of this, that's in between this industrial complex, you're not going to get a bank to go in there, you're not going to get any retail facilities to go in there, I mean, this, this isn't a destination location right off of the highway. It's a perfect location for some, not necessarily higher end, but, you know, a new style of apartment buildings. From what I understand, Commonwealth Landing has a waiting list regarding their rentals. If you've looked at all at, just so you get a...
But that's what it is, though, I mean, it's going to be, it's going to be an income stream for the developers...
Correct.
From the apartments that are going to be developed.
That's correct, and that's why it's not a condominium development, what will...
I mean, let's, let's be honest, what I think we're looking at...
Just so you get an idea of what the scale of the buildings are, because they're almost identical, if you've seen any of the new buildings going up at Lincoln Park on Route Six in Dartmouth, almost identical to that style building. So, so two of those buildings, that, that site's going to support three of those buildings, fifty-three houses, and a commercial development. That would be great if we could take this whole area, but where we've got Mills, one that just burnt down, the ability to redevelop, or coming up with a new redevelopment plan through that location, that there are all these existing structures on, to make someone wait to develop, this could be the stimulus for all of that stuff.
Could be, same thing over here, would be, but the simple answer is...
What's before you?
It's what's before, it's now, or what's happening. I really don't want, I, I am concerned about saying we have to wait, because I think it does, it, in my opinion, that it raises the scepter of taking, not being able to develop the property.
There's a question...
I'd rather just, I'm sorry, one minute. Mr. Butler, how are you?
Yes, how are you?
Fine, thank you. What would you like to tell us?
James Butler, two-seventy-eight Locust Street, Fall River. I am totally against this project. If anybody can see what he is actually saying, first of all, we get bad case of drugs in this city coming in, going out, and no place to live for these people after they get treated, which they don't get treated, they end up on the street. With the two buildings like that, right adjacent to a methadone clinic, what makes you think you all want to get high-end?
That's a problem with this.
There's no clinic there, sir, and it's not before this board.
Well, I'm just, listen, you got to think of the futures out there that's going to happen. You're going to put up those houses...
This may keep the methadone clinic out.
You're not going to get high-end money, you're going to get something like housing from the methadone clinics. That's how I feel that's going to be.
Well, I, thank you, Mr. Butler. That brings up another policy question, I'm glad Mr. Long is here, because hopefully... No, no, I mean, it's a policy issue that I think the city needs to address at some point in time, what we're going to do with the city. If we're going to become the city of providing services for people at risk, then I think that's where we need to go. If we need to do something to try to curb that, I, I think that that's where the direction's going to come from, is the city council and the Director of Planning and the Redevelopment Authority. Mr. Wong, yes, I didn't mean to interrupt.
But we are in the process of looking at all of that.
No, no, I know you are, but I'm saying, the board picture...
Here's my question, from what I've heard here, okay, you're saying that you can't, you're not going, you can't go in and say, there's going to be market rate housing, because, you don't want to say it's not going to be Section Eight, because that would be a land taking.
No, 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 what I said is if we, if we stop the, if we say you can't develop it, wait until it happens, I have an individual that has a property right, and you're saying you can't use your property.
He has a property right to work within the...
That's why he's here, right?
Correct. So he's looking for a special permit?
Correct.
He can't build it without a special permit?
That's correct.
That's not a taking?
No, no.
We're not, we're not saying he can't develop that property.
No, let me try being clear, I'm not saying if we don't grant the special permit it's a taking. If we say, we don't want any development until the city of Fall River or the Redevelopment Authority says, well, now we can develop it, I think that's a problem. The not, the granting or the denial of the special permit, absolutely within the jurisdiction of this board without any issue at all. It's the, telling him, don't come in with your proposal, we don't want to hear until the Redevelopment Authority decides how we're going to develop the area.
And I believe that the letter from the Redevelopment Authority, my statements are saying, we're not saying, don't come in, we're not saying, wait ten years, we're saying, let's just table this until we get a little bit more information.
Clearly, that's exactly what you said.
A little bit more information so that we can make a, a, a good decision.
I understand.
And I would think, you know, his client should be talking to the neighborhood associations and the people that, that are concerned about this, and maybe they can address some of their concerns.
No, I got it. Thank God everybody doesn't do everything the same way, otherwise Greg and I'd be out of a job.
If I may, just in closing, there's no one from this neighborhood here in opposition to this, so that, so there's no one immediately to this adjacent area for us to listen to say, you know, we don't want this here, for whatever reason. Again, this doesn't mean that this is going to get built here, it just allows us to get to the, to the next step.
Wait, wait, make no mistake about it, the granting of the special permit doesn't mean that it's, it's going to happen tomorrow.
Correct.
There is in fact going to be site, if it gets granted, there's going to be site plan review. The, Bill Kenny will have his opportunity with his two hats on, as Director of Planning and Redevelopment, to, to influence how this gets done. But the, the very limited really relief that, that's before the board is strictly, I meet all of the requirements in this district, I need a special permit to develop it, that's it. There's no other relief being asked on this project. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that being said, members of the board, any further questions? Okay, any discussion, any motion to grant, motion to deny? No, you're not, you can't talk. You, we said the two, you've abrogated your rights by giving it to Fiola. We know that, we know that conditions one and two have to go into this project.
That's all I ask for. I'm going to make a motion to accept.
Okay. Motion to grant by Greg Brilliant, special permit, no, no further conditions on it, okay? Do we have second?
Standard conditions one and two.
Greg, the site plan review?
Yes.
I think I can hear it.
Yeah, it, it, or has to be, if it's going to get granted. Do you have, do you second, Jim?
Yes.
Second, Jim? Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? One, two, three, four, no, four to one. John Frank, no. Greg Brilliant, yes. Carol Lamar Sett, yes. David Assad, yes. Jim Carter, yes.
Thank you very much.
So that petition is granted? Thank you. Gender item number...
Do you want to take a break? No, this, this particular one, it was just, he had both special permits due to the fact that it was detrimental, that it was more detrimental. It just, he, you can do it as a...
There isn't even, there is no, there is no burden of even proving that it's less detrimental, it's just something that's allowed by a special permit so we can get an extra set of eyes before somebody just doesn't.
All right, you have number six.
Do anybody need a break?
Does anybody need a break? You want to take a break, we keep on going? Is everybody fine? Gender item number six, Paul, Paul Jesus, three-thirty-two Brownell Street, Lot S-1230. This is a variance request to expand the existing first-floor daycare center to the second-floor apartment, waiving ample requirements in a general G district, lot size six... second-floor apartment, waiving apple requirements in a general G district, lot size 6,500 plus or minus square feet. Before you start your presentation, Dan, I just want to ask Greg a question. My recollection is when we granted this the last time, I'm not sure whether you represented them or you had a house in the neighborhood--
You had a house behind it, yeah.
Okay. You don't have... So you don't have a problem? Okay. So that was my only question. I just--
No, I was here and I spoke for it.
You did, yeah.
No, I mean, that's just... I'm looking at you. I'm recalling what was last time we did.
You weren't on the board, though. That's right. You were in the audience. That's right. That's right. I remember that. Good evening. For the record, Dan Agiar, Site Tech Engineering, here this evening on behalf of Paul Jesus, who is the property owner of 332 Brownell Street. Currently at this property, there is existing a daycare center on the first floor and an apartment on the second floor. In 2015, we were before the Board, and we were granted relief to convert an existing two-family dwelling into daycare on the first floor, leaving the apartment on the second floor. And even during that discussion, Mrs. Jesus explained to the Board that she hopes in time to either get busy enough to go build another building somewhere or potentially to take over this building, but for the time being, she needed somewhere to live as well. So apparently, she's done well over the last two years. She called me and asked me if we could file an additional petition removing the apartment use from the second floor and allowing the expansion of the daycare center up to the second floor as well. I made sure that she clearly understood the requirements for handicap accessibility to the second floor, and I went through everything. I met her, meet with the building inspector. I wanted her to understand the costs associated with moving into a second floor for a commercial use. So she went through that effort, worked everything out with the Architectural Access Board, with the city for different types of lifts and everything else, so she's resolved that, and she's okay with spending that money. So we're here this evening seeking relief a second time, again, allowing the removal of that apartment and allowing the entire building. It's basically a two-story colonial cape-looking home that's on Brownell Street. In the previous petition, we had proposed six off-street parking spaces and a drop-off area. That's worked very well for them to this point. In the zoning bylaw, we are required to have one parking space per employee per shift, and we far exceeded that prior to, and we'll still exceed that again. We do have the ability to have those six off-street parking spaces and that little drop-off area as well. So it's a pretty straightforward application.
My recollection, the second floor was occupied. There was a resident. There's someone--
They lived there. Yeah, that's right.
So the rec--
Oh, she is. I didn't even know you were still here.
The living, the residents, is now... Will no longer exist. So now it's going to be strictly hours of operation, and the Department of Early Education and Care, it's beyond our... It's beyond our permitting capability.
Correct.
They have to permit this use. If we grant it, the only thing that we can do is permit the use, but beyond that, the other things are governed by regulation and permitting from the Department of Early Education and Care.
As far as hours of operation, nothing will change from what's currently on site. I'm not sure exactly what was in the last permit, but we've been able to live with those conditions.
It'll be the same, what currently exists.
Exactly.
What's going to be the license? How many kids?
Well, it depends on the capacity, like how much the building can take. And right now, because we have enough space to take up to, like on the first floor, 20 to 30 children, so we double because it's the same space on the first and second floor.
Wow. That can't help.
I've been there many times in the morning, and actually, I couldn't believe how many people walk their kids to the school. I'm not sure how far out you draw kids from, but... Because I sat there one morning before we filed this, and I said, "I want to see what happens traffic-wise here in a peak condition in the morning." And what happens is everybody gets there earlier than all the school traffic out on North Main Street happens, so it's very, very quiet during drop-off and even pickup, which is after the school lets out as well. As you know, that North Main Street area is abysmal during school coming in and school coming out, but daycare uses, of course, begin earlier and end a little bit later than your normal school day. So from what I can see--
Intensive number seven.
Yeah. And they were--
And I lived there. I lived in that house.
I was surprised that I could find--
Three years.
I was expecting to pull up in the morning and not be able to find an on-street parking space. There were plenty. Believe it or not, there are a lot of off-street parking places in some of these buildings. And again, us having the ability to keep six plus the garage space so we can exceed the parking requirements. That's all. Anything regarding signage or anything else? Nothing different than the original petition.
It's all--
Just get rid of apartment, which we're actually going to lose, you know, or not lose, but we're going to gain--
You're going to stop the activity.
We're going to gain parking by not having to have two off-street parking spaces for the apartment use either.
Okay. Any other questions, members of the Board? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Motion to grant, motion to deny? Are you going to do this?
Motion to grant.
Grant. Any conditions? No. Same thing. No, I'm just wondering whether or not there's any--
Because all the parking's already there, right?
Yeah. Yeah, it's a long driveway there. We can fit six cars easily.
So motion to grant, second. All those in favor? Opposed, none. Petitions granted. Thank you. Agenda item number seven. 294 Robeson Street, Lot M894, variance request to construct a new single-family dwelling, replacing the previously existing four-family dwelling that was destroyed by fire, waiving use and dimensional requirements in an apartment district A2, lot size 6,128 plus or minus square feet.
Right now. Good evening. For the record, Dan Agiar, Site Tech Engineering, here this evening on behalf of Brian Casey Perry. Can you not sit? Anyone want to wait?
I'm going to go to the back. Okay. He's going. Ed available, listen to this one.
Excellent. Okay.